Good evening. This regular meeting of October 23rd, 2017 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the policies as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the policies as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we are on to the strategic plan update.
Thank you. So I will give a little history for those in the room who maybe aren't familiar with the history, but as you know, five years ago, we adopted a strategic plan for the district, or a new strategic plan. And during that time, we've kind of evolved into a yearly goal-setting through priority initiatives. And so each spring, we work with the buildings and their building plans and district plan, and we set priority initiatives that sort of quantify what work are we going to do in the coming school year around movement towards that strategic plan. So to do that, then we report out three times a year, usually October, February, and May, about how are we progressing with attaining those goals. So this past year, we had some conversation knowing that we were rewriting or looking at the strategic plan about maybe not doing priority initiatives this year and just focusing our work on updating or renewing the strategic plan. We decided not to do that. We didn't want to lose a year of momentum. So tonight is just that first of three meetings where we talk about our movement towards attaining our priority initiatives under the current strategic plan. So if you're watching thinking you're going to hear about the new strategic plan, that's going to happen. Another step in that will happen on November 9th, I believe, if Johnny is that correct date, where we do a board work session in the afternoon. So this is not that. This is not looking forward into the strategic plan or where we were going to be in five years. This is simply a report out of what have we done this year around the goals or priority initiatives, as we call them, that were established last spring for the 17, 18 school year. Okay? So I just thought I would do a quick clarification. Mike, I actually have a PowerPoint in front of me. As you know, we classify each of our priority initiatives, both with some talking points but with an icon, so it's kind of a quick and easy to where are we at. So check mark would be completed, green, significant progress, yellow, steady progress, red, some progress. Those of you who have paid attention to this know that it's very rare for us to have a completed priority initiative on the October report out. We have one or two, but not usually, certainly if the whole list was check marked, you're going to say, well, you didn't work very hard this year, or everybody could take the rest of the year off starting tomorrow. And then we also try to avoid having red, but everything tends to be in the yellow or green that we're moving in the direction that was stated as a goal. So in front of you, you have a list of what I'm going to talk about in regards to where we believe we are in the attainment of our priority initiatives for our current strategic plan. Everybody with me so far? Okay, so we'll jump into student achievement. Feel free to stop me, ask questions either as we go, or certainly if you want to jot some notes and ask questions at the end, that's fine too. Student achievement. The first priority initiative was to plan for update standards, assessments, content, instruction, resources, and secondary business education, elementary math, gifted and talented through doing our curriculum studies. So the business education study is well underway and continues to focus on our business education and computer science classes, as well as piloting the student help desk for our technology. Sort of as an addition to that, though not part of this particular goal, what is work around adding financial literacy to our required graduation requirements. So that really wasn't in mind when we wrote this, but we met as late as the afternoon to talk with folks about adding the financial literacy piece to as a graduation requirement for future graduating classes. So it's important to know that that's well underway as well. Elementary math study committee has met a couple of times. The committee has analyzed student and staff perception of the data. They've also started reading and discussing research and best practices in math. So we like to sort of set the stage before we do a significant change about, you know, not just what do we think or what do we experience, but what's best practice, what's out there, what maybe has changed in any curricular area prior to starting that study. So that's where they're at in math. And then the GT gifted and talented, that will kick off later this year, right after the first of the year, but will be begun this year. So that's why we would give that a green. We've made some significant progress. In fact, we've added to it at the recommendation of the board with the financial literacy Launch any time, anywhere learning initiative to enhance curriculum delivery and new device deployment in the ninth grade level. That has gone very well. We have Colby and his team and the principals and the ninth grade, well, the teaching staffs at the high school have done a great job, David Olson, in getting this up and running. Devices are out, they're being used on a regular basis. I was driving home on Friday, we had an administrative meeting here on a non-school day, and so I drove down Grand View. You can identify the computers because of the case with the logo on the outside of it. So some kids walking, hopefully to do some homework, maybe to do some gaming, I don't know, but they had their computers with them. So I think very few bugs in that system. It also has given us an opportunity to start a student-run help desk, and they've presented, and we've talked about that in the past. So there's lots of side benefits to that as well. So we feel like that is a check mark. We've moved forward, and we'll talk in our next rendition of this about how we move that to the next step next year. Provide teachers with more diagnostic information to guide their instruction of students through implementation of the Iowa Tier system and their pre-K through sixth grade reading. So this gets a little more technical, so if you have questions or want clarification, stop me there now or at the end. So Iowa Tier has switched. It is now called Fast Bridge. You know, we like to, the state changes that from ten to ten.
It's not called Iowa Tier?
Pardon?
It's not called Iowa Tier?
Correct. It's FAST, all capital letters, Bridge. If somebody asks me what FAST stands for, I'm going to hope somebody else in the room knows, because I'm not exactly sure what FAST stands for. In the spring of 2017, all elementary and sixth grade staff are trained on the FAST assessment, so that can be implemented. In the fall of 2017, all elementary and sixth grade students participated in the FAST screening. That window doesn't close until October 27th, but I believe all but a handful of our students in elementary and sixth grade have gone through that test, which will provide our teachers, as well as parents, some information about their student and how they're progressing with reading.
Is this FAST being utilized at secondary as well?
Just sixth grade. So sixth grade for us is technically secondary, but the state implementation was pre-K through six.
Okay.
So it does have a little bit of a life in middle school. In the fall of 2017, all parents K through five informed of their FAST test results. So again, it's just a communication with parents, what skills do they have and at what level. All elementary and sixth grade instructional coaches and principals were trained in reports and progress monitoring. So again, it helps a teacher. It's all about being diagnostic, and it helps a teacher to understand the kids that are in their class, where their strengths are, where they could use some reinforcement or reteaching. All students receiving additional instruction will be progress monitored weekly, starting nearly during October 30th. So the student is identified as being at risk. There's an ongoing monitoring process that happens every week to kind of help us keep an eye on students so that they don't regress or fall through the cracks, and we get to the end of the year and maybe see we've missed the boat. So it's ongoing weekly progress monitoring for that student.
And then they do that assessment with new students throughout the course of the year? I mean, is that part of the normal?
So if somebody moves in?
Somebody moves into the?
Cindy, that's a good question. So if a student moves in from out of state, they would be given that test?
This is the first year we've had the opportunity, but we will give it anytime. It's just that the state test only closes on 27th, but we can give that FAST at any time or at any time.
So to count in the state data, it has to be given by the 27th, but for us to use it for that student's progression, we can do that anytime. So I will ask that if anybody, if we ask you guys a question, I noticed they're all set in the back.
It's church.
If you would come up and use the microphone, or else you won't be on the recording that will last forever.
We promise not to turn the camera on you, but we need the audio.
We hate to lose those pearls of wisdom. Actively engage students in their own learning through implementation of new and enhanced experience-based instructional strategies such as project-based learning. That is really a big chunk. We've been working towards that. We've got individual examples of how that's happening. Buildings have written that into their building plans. We'll have some more data around that next time. I also suspect that potentially up to the board, but this will live a major life on the ninth and moving forward as we rewrite the strategic plan that, as opposed to being a priority initiative, it might very well be a strategic initiative to really drive that forward with the time and resources needed. Business education study is working on, you know, all of our, as we do curriculum development studies, we embed that as part of that conversation now. Certainly, business ed is a perfect place to put that. You know, on-the-job training is part of a marketing course that we have. Again, I point back to the student help desk, but how do we incorporate more and more opportunities for credit or not, but in my mind, for credit for students to get out and be a part of, you know, utilizing some of those, I guess you could call them soft skills, but not only the teamwork and the interaction, the creation, all of those types of things.
The student help desk, when they presented to us, was a perfect example of project-based learning and how it can be implemented following that example in other areas.
Absolutely.
I mean, I was really excited to see how it was all, not only are they just helping, fill that need of helping all of the students with the computer stuff, but...
Well, and helping the adults.
Well, yeah, the adults.
The power of being able to help the adults in the scenario too, and not only the confidence and the communications, but the problem, the investedness in the system or in a system. So that's, I mean, I think that's our future.
It's a great example.
And again, that'll be really something that, again, of course, that's up to the board, but I think we'll push forward through for some recommendations on our strategic plan. All right. Maximize learning for all students at all levels by enhancing and strengthening general education special education co-teaching. So that is something we've made significant progress on. We had many teachers and both special education and Gen Ed teachers trained over the summer and in the beginning implementing. So four out of our five secondary schools participated in a four-day training in July to be trained as trainers for the rest of the staff. Again, that is then brought back and comes to life on Friday mornings. And that's why those Friday morning PD times are so indispensable, because it really gives us a time to take some new learning and bring that forward. Elementary schools participated in co-teacher training, not all of them, but half of them. All elementary schools are utilizing co-teaching in various ways. So whole class teaching, so two adults in one classroom, subject co-teaching, so maybe it's a particular subject area. So that's, again, a way, and the struggle we'll have with the co-teaching model is of course expense. You know, you're looking at a little bit more expensive model. It's best for kids. That's what the research would say. It's best for all kids. And so the challenge will be finding ways with the resources that we have to continue a co-teaching model.
So what percentage of our, would you say of our buildings, and I'm assuming this is mostly at the elementary level? Is some at the secondary level as well?
Yes, absolutely. No, I think...
Is that a reasonable, kind of figure out, we say all students at all levels, Mike, I'm just curious, are we 80% there or are we 50%?
I think at the elementary school, so again, it's not a matter of every student being in a co-taught classroom.
I understand that. Is it present in some form or fashion?
Yeah, is it present? I don't know how I would give that a percentage. Cindy, do you have a feeling, or David, at the secondary level?
At the secondary level, we co-teach in the core area.
Right.
Not in the other.
Right. So that constitutes about, oh yeah, you've got to come forward, sorry. So the core areas, that probably constitutes 50% of what our students are engaged in?
50. Ask that one more time.
Okay, so at our core areas, if you look at, I don't know, best way to ask that. So if you look at the total graduation requirements, which we've been talking about, the core areas, it's really hard to put a percentage of that, because not every, not every core class is co-taught, because some are and some aren't based on the needs of the students in that class.
I was going to say, more it's on a needed basis, the classroom, probably.
So what person, so...
Maybe how much we're increasing it then, you know?
Yeah.
Because this is a tough one to quantify.
It is.
That's what Mike's getting at. It'd be nice if we could quantify it and see exactly where we're at.
I just don't, yeah, I don't know what it...
But maybe the best way to look at it is how many classrooms do we have that, in math and science and social studies and language arts, that do utilize co-teaching? But it's based on the need of the mix of students.
How about maybe what would your gut say in terms of increased co-teaching versus five years ago?
Oh.
5% more, 10% more, 20% more, 30%?
No, I would say since five years ago, we've probably doubled the amount of co-teaching that's available.
Wow, okay, okay. That helps, know that, yeah.
Probably the best way for us to look at it, and we don't have that data right now, would be of the students who are in special education, how many of them are in co-taught classes with Gen Ed peers? And then again, that's not always appropriate for all students, you know?
For special education students, we might offer, we call the course title a practical course, like a practical English, which means they're isolated, they're separated from their peers, they're just receiving special education instruction. The idea is, of course, the least restrictive environment, get them in the Gen Ed classes, that's where the co-teaching comes into play. So if we have an English one-two class, freshman English, not all of those classes are co-taught. The number of classes that are co-taught are those that are able to meet the needs of the special education students that are in there. We're not trying to have 75% students with an IEP in a classroom with Gen Ed students. So it has, it's a minority, a less than 50%, maybe a 40 or 30% of the students might have an IEP in that classroom, and then a special education teacher and a Gen Ed teacher are in that classroom together. But it hasn't been our goal to grow it bigger particularly. Not all students with IEPs need to be in a classroom that is co-taught necessarily. They may not need specially-designed instruction in that classroom. They may be just fine being just mainstreamed into that classroom.
Right. We would prefer they not, we would prefer they be on their own, because that's real life. But the next least restrictive piece is that they're in a co-taught classroom with a Gen Ed and a special ed teacher. In the elementary world, I think we've seen some significant growth in those classrooms to get our young people in an academically diverse classroom.
What we've spent our time this summer learning about is how to do it better, how to do it more efficiently. This is a complicated thing when two adults are working in a classroom together, and they may not have common planning time together. Ideally, that would be great, doesn't always work that way. They can't always, they have to be a compatible pair to get along with each other, to know what they're doing next, and they have to be very efficient in their planning. The training, which I attended a two-day version of the four-day version that many of our teachers had, really told how to do it efficiently, how to do it smarter, how to make the best out of the money that we're spending on having two teachers in a classroom. And it's been accepted very well. It was very quality training. We've been doing co-teaching for a long time, and we haven't necessarily known how to do it as well as we're learning now.
Maybe this would be a topic for us to bring to an ed program's agenda sometime in the upcoming future.
Yeah, I think we spoke about it a little ways back, but it would be a good, a good update.
Yeah.
We could try to quantify.
Right.
You know, again, we'd like to think that all kids who would benefit from it are currently in that, in that scenario. Student development. Explore and plan for an updated instructional delivery model for students with behavior challenges. Steady progress is underway there. We have had conversations with internally and with some of our external partners. We'll be having ongoing dialogue with the board, or upcoming dialogue with the board about some of those scenarios and where and how that takes place and, you know, costs associated with that. It's yellow, but it's one that's going to come to green in a check mark, I think relatively quickly, because, you know, it's a...
It has to.
It has to, correct. So we're looking at various alternatives, locations, those types of things. Research and explore the addition of a transitional kindergarten program. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with the term of transitional kindergarten, some school districts have a kindergarten that sort of bridges preschool and kindergarten, and a transitional kindergarten student then often spends the next year in kindergarten. So it's transition from preschool, so it's preschool, transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade. And so, you know, your students who maybe aren't checking all the boxes of showing being ready for kindergarten would go to transitional kindergarten. Some of those students would then leapfrog ahead and be ready for first grade, and some wouldn't. So we're looking at that data. There are a few hangups at the state level about transitional kindergartens, but we're kind of trying to work through that. The state, one of the things that we know is that if a student goes from a transitional kindergarten to a kindergarten, they must be officially retained, because the state doesn't want to pay for that year twice. And so the only way you can, because technically they are accessing education for 14 years instead of 13 years. And so the only way a student can do that is if they are retained. So we're working through those conversations, do we want to do this, how do we want to do this?
So it's just a label, kind of?
Correct.
So they...
Well, we would tell parents going into that. So we have students, you know, there are...
I know, I know.
It's a hoop.
But they want to do, they wanted to do it back when they were in third grade and not care that we call it that.
Right.
I'm just...
I'm just explaining it.
Yeah, I know, I know. You're the messenger. I know it's not you, I just...
And this hasn't happened yet. You're just exploring it.
It has not. We're exploring. We started having some meetings last year, and this came forward. Some of the UENs have done this, might be a topic of conversation if you go to the UEN banquet and you're at a table with some of those districts, if they have it or they don't, if they like it, don't they? Some of the early data would be that they believe it to be very successful in some of the districts that they're at, because it gives them sort of a jumpstart, and so by second, third grade, they're still maintaining. But so analyzing fall IGDs, individual growth and development indicators, analyzing fall 2017 FAST data, trying to look at functionality of buildings and where would this fit in. Everyone I've spoken to in regards to this said, you better be really careful about how you get in, because the opposite of what you think will happen will happen. And you'll have parents whose kids are absolutely ready for kindergarten saying, we'd like an extra year, can we get transitional kindergarten? So you really have to set a bar to say this is, because from a space, location, those types of things. That tends to be the issue for those who have it more than somebody saying, well, I don't want my child in transitional kindergarten. Most parents are very receptive to it. In fact, sometimes seek it out when it's maybe not appropriate because their son or daughter is prepared.
Is that not what pre-kindergarten used to be back in its day?
I don't, I'm not sure.
Pretty much the same. Isn't that pre-kindergarten we think of as preschool? So we think of three and four-year-olds and early fives.
But didn't some schools have pre-kindergarten in the state? I mean, I don't know the...
In the state, yes.
I think Des Moines had it way back when I was there in the schools. They had pre-kindergarten, which is kind of the same thing, I thought.
We think of our three and four-year-old programming as pre-kindergarten.
I see.
Our current programming. And it's a, it's more of a title difference. I think you're probably referring to what Stan is talking about, which is the...
Yeah, wow. Isn't this years ago?
Commonly called transitional kindergarten.
Transitional kindergarten, right.
Yeah, I see. Okay, just...
Is the state advocating this, or?
No.
Not really?
School districts have gone...
School districts are advocating. So are some UEN schools right now employing this?
Yeah, I know Fort Dodge does. I don't know, I don't want to start listing, but I'll be wrong, but some do, yeah. And again, the hangup with the state is technically retain the kid. And so if we would get to that point, we would tell you upfront, you know, we do this, here's your retaining letter on the first, you know, in the spring before, you know, just so that there aren't any surprises at the end. It's just, that's the functionality of how you generate the funds.
That's interesting.
Didn't also when kindergarten went from half-day to full-day, then wasn't that to help those children better prepare for first grade?
Sure, absolutely.
So now they want to...
It's a very small number of kids.
That's what I thought. It's got to be very small.
It would be, I don't even know where to guess, but it would probably be 20 kids, maybe, maybe 30. I mean, you're talking a classroom or two.
Interesting.
But again, those, again, and then Martha Bruckner, before she retired at Fort Dodge, and I had a long conversation about it, and they really felt that they were seeing long-term growth based on that process. So that's where we really started having the conversation about that. Increase the number of students taking post-secondary coursework with specific emphasis on removing barriers for underrepresented populations. So again, for this and a couple of other areas, one of the things you'll see is we've developed a timeline for planning. All of our leadership teams or our principals, our educational support team are doing a book study this semester with this book called Building Equity, which is, which is a pretty solid book. Hopefully, the board all has, board received copies of that. And then the principals take that back to their leadership teams and then work through that system. But we think it's important through our EST, every time we develop curriculum, principals, registrars, are there things, guidance counselors, are there things that we're missing, with the idea that first semester is this, second semester, as they develop their building plans for the 18, 19 school year, that there be planks within their plan that talk about building equity and making sure that we're living up to our mission statement for all of our, for all of our students. So we've started to pull apart the data, which until recently was much more difficult than you would think, to pull apart the data in your AP classes and some other things, but through some upgrades in Power School, and more importantly, some finagling by Colby and his team, we were able to trick the system into giving us better data so that we can meet with principals and share with the board, you know, where we're doing well and where we can, where we can do better. But we really want all of our students to have a post-secondary experience, AP, concurrent enrollment, PSEO, something that gives them a view into the world outside of the traditional high school before they graduate. And for many students, obviously, that'll manifest itself into multiple opportunities to do that, but the key is to get them in that first one. If you can get them in the first one, it changes maybe a little bit of their belief about who they are and where they're headed and whether or not they can handle this level of coursework. So we've got some good, we've got some data there that is being shared, and we would expect that as part of our plans. And then, of course, we're also building a district plan based on this work, so that everything's kind of in alignment. So part of our district priority initiatives and at the building level is how do we transition, make sure between eighth grade and ninth grade kids are in the right courses that lead them to these opportunities. The next thing, support enhance comprehensive cultural competency in all of our secondary schools. Again, I go back to this book and our plan, but our buildings aren't waiting just for this. You know, buildings are in different places, which is again, why we're trying to build ability. You know, we, again, we don't want to, our job is to help them grow, and then they can build their own plans. Jefferson and Washington are working with the Inclusive Dubuque, doing some current training around cultural competency. Washington already has the Moxy squad in place, and again, that model is working and will be looked at by our other building systems. When I say that, I probably should have the Moxy squad come and do a brief session with this at some point. It's really, really impressive. Senior high school has ongoing cultural competency training as well with all their teachers, happens on Friday mornings. Hempstead staff is working with their administrative team around competency training, and we'll look at additional ways to incorporate that moving forward onto their Friday mornings. Again, it sounds like a broken record and have for five years, but that Friday morning gives us the time to embed these things into the school experience for students. So making some significant process, progress there, and I think we're going to see some great growth and change in that area. Develop a long-term sustainable after-school activities program at the middle school level. This one is getting exhausting. It's yellow. This year, we have the Foundation for to Be Public Schools, as well as the other groups to thank for supporting LEAP. LEAP has been in existence now for seven or eight years, Shirley. Seven years. And so, as you know, it was funded the first five years, has been unfunded the last two. We continue to find ways to make that happen. Our numbers actually that Amy was showing me this morning would indicate that we've seen an uptick, even though the funding is down. And we believe in part because a lot more of that is being done internally. And so we have folks kind of out recruiting for their programs and talking to kids, and it's all about building relationships to get them to walk through the door. We are resubmitting a grant this year for the 21st Century Grant, and we're talking with, hopefully working with community partners around that for LEAP. You may remember last year, we wrote 21st Century Grant around summer school. 21st Century Grant is kind of a unique animal, and the requirements or their preferences change from year to year, what they want to fund and what they don't fund. And so it looks like with the rules of this grant, and Shirley's actively involved in that, it looks like LEAP would again, would be a good target. Again, they like to see partnerships. And so I know without naming too many groups, but Shirley is working with, again, partners to see if we can fund an after-school program for middle school students. And then we'll have to figure out other ways to fund summer school because 21st Century Grant is obviously not going to be able to do that as we had hoped. But anything else you want me to say about that, Shirley? Community engagement. Oh, here's pilot and make modifications to an elementary standards-based progress report for more, to more efficiently, effectively communicate student learning to students and families. That saw its first true trial run at parent-teacher conferences last week. There are a few glitches, as any pilot would have, but by and large, it is fantastic. It really communicates to parents, to helps teachers track. It really, it's all about individualizing education, right? It's about knowing what Kevin does well and needs work on, what Joni, what Nancy, what Jim. And so having a report card that reports that to parents not only helps the teacher understand their students better, but also helps a parent. If a parent says, you know, okay, my kid has a letter grade in reading, what does that tell me? Well, this report card breaks it down and says, what do they do well? What don't they know how to do? So as a parent, you have a tool to help you help them learn how to read or math or whatever the specific... So our content leaders are piloting that this year with the intent of taking that to...
What schools are, is this being piloted?
All of our elementary.
All the elementary.
Did the parents get any of it yet? I mean, did they get that?
Yes, they would have gotten.
What was the response?
So Cindy, do you want to come up and talk about that? I'll hit the actual, see, they always submit talking points to me, and then I just talk about other stuff. But so, Summer of 2017 tasks were written as staff developed a content leaders standard report card. 1718 school year, 89 teachers implemented the standards-based reports, report card, including classroom teachers and specialists in every elementary building. August of 2017, all parents and students in pilot classrooms received information about the change in reporting student classroom achievement. This fall, conferences, just last week, parents received information on how to access a report card at any time. That's the other piece, it's ongoing, you don't have to wait for a report card. It's always available. You can log in and see that. Spring of 18, anticipate all elementary teachers receive staff development for the standards-based report card. So if I would read my notes, maybe you have your questions. Cindy, anything from last week?
Parent comments. You know, overall, the parents were very happy. They, from the comments we received from our content leaders we talked to today, you know, a couple of things, spelling, there's no spelling test, spelling is not part of the standards. So that was a new thing for some of our teachers. So we integrated that into decoding and learning, you know, the morphemes and that kind of thing, so...
But did parents like the, like the format of the, of the report card? Did they like what they're, how it's new?
I think they, I think they liked the information they received because it's very clear. So for example, knows how to use a dictionary. They either met that standard and they know it, or they have not met it, and the teacher needs to reteach that. So it's very clear what the kids know and what they don't know.
And then the, the parents will get information on how to improve at home too, or is it just for the teachers?
The, the parents can contact the teachers if they want to have that information, but they access that progress report anytime they want.
Like what Anderson's saying, is so you, you've got a teacher in front of the parents talking about the child's success in one of their, or shortfalls in one of these areas. Clearly, the teacher reteaching is one option.
Right.
I mean, I hope that teachers are taking the opportunity to engage the parent in terms of, okay, here, here, I'm going to do this, but this is what you can do.
You can do it at home.
With Sally, when she gets home, that would kind of together create...
And many of our teachers are piloting at the same time a program called Seesaw. And so what Seesaw does is it's an electronic portfolio of whether they met those tasks or those standards or not. So they can see the kiddos, if it's reading fluently, they see the students reading fluently. If it's not, then the parents see how the kids are reading. So they get to see their own child, how they're meeting the standard or not meeting the standard, and then how to help them.
How are the teachers adapting to all this extra, that's a little extra documentation? How are they adapting to it?
You know, it is extra, but in the long run, I don't think, yeah, in the long run, they're seeing it as extra. I mean, they've used kind of what they've had in the past.
And we should invite Tammy up too. Tammy's been instrumental in implementation and development. One of the things that, so one of the reasons this works, I think, so well, number one is it's good for kids, it's the right thing for us to do for kids and for parents. But we also spent all of last year, and this is when Nancy was on board and Tammy and Cindy, and, but the teachers who are implementing it or piloting it this year by and large helped develop it.
Right.
So it's not something that we developed and said, here, go do this, but we've developed it jointly with their, with their expertise and their knowledge, just saying, okay, what does this look like? How do we, so that there's just a much different level of investment in, in this implementation. And so just a lot more power in implementing that. And then next year, this fall or the spring, moving into next year, we'll move towards all teachers doing that at the elementary level.
And we, we did a survey of the teachers after about six weeks, and some of the things we heard was, some of the things we heard were, "I know my kids better. I know what my students need. I know when they master a topic, our content. I know what I need to do next." I mean, that, those are the, those are the kind of things that we said, what's going well with this? And this is what they said. So...
Because we've spelled out what that means more clearly.
Yep.
And we're not telling them how to get the kids there, but we're saying, what does it mean? How do we know when you've done that?
And they're training to look at all these areas.
In all of our classrooms, so that it's an equal, and there's a little bit of an equity piece, that it doesn't matter what teacher you have, everybody's defining these skills the same way.
Right.
To make sure that all kids are getting that same.
And that's what the team talked about today. It's really, no matter what school you're in, the same expectations, the same standards for all students, and then the same reteaching for all students. Again, it's a big plane, and we have to build it a little at a time. So right now, we're writing those tasks. Today, we spent the day writing the next set of tasks and revising what we've already done because either it didn't work, it was too rigorous, it wasn't rigorous enough, there were pieces missing. So this is a process that will continue.
And I would, I believe that within two years, when we're fully implemented and we've gone through all those stages, that the, the team that developed that will be a hot commodity around the state with other districts saying, please come to us and show you how that you did this. Because others have added some, some standards-based report cards, but I don't think they've gone to the level of work and detail that our team has to make sure that it really hits the nail on the head and make sure that all of our students are judged, not judged, that's the wrong word, but are, you know, measured the same way. So I think we're, it's in the early stage of something that's going to be really, really impactful for us.
I think the other thing for parents is that the previous elementary progress report, which this one replaces, was alleged to be standards-based, but it was developed in an era when the standards weren't today's standards. So teachers wanting to implement a new standards-based life of teaching and learning and report to parents about each child's progress. The progress report, the previous one, didn't have today's standards. So now this not only brings today's standards in front of each child, in front of each teacher, in front of each parent, but it also, thanks to Tammy and Cindy and some others, brought in teams of teachers who developed assessments so that each standard has a prescribed informal assessment, a formative, day-to-day, do in your classroom kind of thing, to measure those so that there's consistency across all elementary teachers in all schools to say, how will we decide if that child has mastered that or has not? And I think all of that brings, it brings more integrity to the teachers who are trying to do a standards-based way of teaching and learning. It gives parents accurate information, and teachers also have provided a quality measurement for knowing if each child has met that standard. So it's more solid.
Right. It helps them get to middle school on the same, in the same plane.
I think that it has changed our classrooms because in the past, we've given what we call a test, and then we take a grade, and the grade grows in the grade book. Now, we give a task, and, and teachers analyze that task. And they'll say, oh, you know what? This group of kids, they had an addition, an addition error. So I just got to work on that with those. This group of kids, they don't understand borrowing at all. I need to work on that with these kids. This group of, so it's very much down to the kid level, more than a grade in a grade book. And that's where we really want to be.
How does that work from a parent's, let's say, perspective?
Do they get a notification? Is this an email? Is this a special software program that they then log into? And then, I assume that some parents probably log in frequently.
Sure.
And probably some not so frequently.
So what we found out today was that you may sign up for notification when a grade is entered or met or not met, has been entered into a standard. And we had one of our parents contact us. They had 17 emails over the weekend, notifications because teachers were working on, looking at the task and putting that information in there. So parents sign up for the notification every time something goes in there on those standards.
So they voluntarily sign up for that.
And a parent without the technology still has parent-teacher conferences, or we certainly are happy to work with them to get access, you know, at, at school.
Right.
And I think come in and show that, because again, we do always have to be careful about that.
And they receive that information this past week, that they can go into the office at any time and request a printed copy of that. Good.
Okay, next one, just to thank you. Effectively communicate to the community the impact of the instructional support levy in district operations. That's a complete. So for the next 11 years, we will benefit greatly from the generosity of our taxpayers and voting in favor of the instructional support levy. So again, that one's a complete, and it's also a thank you to folks who, almost 80% of which voted in favor. Next one, conduct district-wide equity audit. Again, yellow, have been through that process. We've given you at some committee meeting, a copy of that timeline and that plan. So now it's just a matter of getting through that plan and building, and we will, at our next meeting in, not our next meeting, our next update meeting in January, have more to share with that. Engage community partners to explore potential new delivery models to expand, to reach a summer reading support for elementary schools. Again, steady progress, school connection. So I mentioned about 21st Century Grant, that's not going to happen, but we're, we're not giving up on summer reading program, a summer reading academy. What are we going to do about that? One of our concerns, as we've shared, is, you know, the students who attend, 88% of them have a very beneficial experience as far as their reading goes. But we're not necessarily content with that we're reaching all of the students we want to reach. We have about 50%, shade over 50% of the students who are invited to attend. So we have, as you know, added school connection specialists at our Title I buildings, and so their job is to connect with the parents and the school. And so they are surveying parents one-to-one at the kitchen table or on the phone or whatever way it works best, to ask the parents a variety of things. But one is, you know, your son or daughter qualified for summer reading and you didn't, they didn't come. So not as a judgment, but to help us understand. So what would, what would help that? Location? Would it be, do you want us to partner with somebody else and offer some of that programming somewhere else? What is it that is a barrier that we can overcome? So that's going to be a great tool for us because, you know, it's not a survey, it's not something we sit on, it's a one-to-one conversation. Data gathered about students who attend the community opportunities instead of the summer academy. So worked with the Boys and Girls Club, the Dream Center, the City, St. Mark's, to say, okay, can you tell us who was at your program? And then we double check that, here are the kids who were invited. So here are the ones with us, and where are the students that maybe weren't with us but were somebody else? Unfortunately, this still leaves a pretty big gap. We had maybe hoped that many of those students were in those other programs, and quite honestly, they weren't. I mean, a few, but not, not very many. Some because those programs don't really focus on that age group, and some just, you know, they just weren't there. Because our hope was, well, maybe we can work, and it's still one of the conversations, can we work with those groups, those agencies and say, you know, if the kids are coming to you and they're comfortable being there, then what can we do to supply training, to help with materials, maybe even have one of our teachers that we're paying be onsite to help with reading? Because we really want to seriously look at, you know, what does the data tell us? Who's not there? And how, how can we get them to participate? Because we know 88% of them who show up will, will be positively impacted. So we just need to get 88% of a larger number moving forward. And then we do have a meeting sometime shortly, coming up to talk about, you know, again, sort of an after action, what happened this summer, what can we do better, and what's the data from? That's the time we want the school connection specialist to have all their data in place so we can start to make plans for next year. And of course, funding will always be one of our concerns, and how do we continue to fund that with...
Well, I think it's important that we continue to do this, but at some point, I mean, we offer, we get them there, we offer meals, we offer after-school programming, you know, or after the program thing. I mean, what, at some point, other than going and knocking on their door and picking them up in the morning and getting them dressed, you know, what do we, there comes a point where we, we can only do so much.
Well, but I think there, but I still think there are, there's avenues that we can, I mean, we're thinking of, the way we kind of think of is, bring them to us. And I think we have to be open to thinking about ways to how we explore bringing it to them, you know, meeting them where they're at, wherever that might be. Granted, it's got to be, it can't be one off here, one off there. But, but I do think having those conversations with some of those community partners is a great way to start to peel back that onion and figure out, you know, in some cases, you may never get past the barrier, whatever it is.
That's right.
And so then maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's a, enough of a mass, if you may, or population that we can then say, like you said, take a, take a teacher and have them, you know, take the teacher to them rather than having them come to the teacher.
Oh, absolutely. If they're comfortable going to whatever program that's out there.
I think it's just always working to make sure we're maximizing our resources, the time, people, money, you know, the things that are, the resources. And I think we've hit a nice note for the kids who show up, and we certainly don't want to diminish that, so we want to continue that. But are there other resources that could be, you know, part of that, that get focused in a, in a different way so that we're always maximizing the efficiency of our resources? And if that means, you know, so, so yeah, I think we've, we've made an awful lot of changes, we've done an awful lot of best guess, and now our next step is to just, we've got these positions, these relationships to sit down with the folks and just say, it might be, it might be communications. We think we communicate, but, you know, maybe somebody just really didn't.
Stan, are those connection specialists, are they around in the summertime when the reading program's going on?
So we have a limited funding for that through Title I, so we've talked about tweaking their workday. They wouldn't be there all summer.
Right.
But if there was a way to maybe have them available the first few days to say, okay, oh, I'm going to pick up the phone because I know so-and-so, or I'll start, and say, hey, you know, the start is today, or, you know, can you come tomorrow and get started kind of thing? But the funding's not there to make it a year-round, but I think we can work with that.
Well, that might get them there, having someone call them and say, hey.
You know, you never know.
We miss them.
Yeah, we miss them. Sometimes that's a powerful statement.
That personal connection.
Reminder.
Absolutely.
That's good. All right.
All right. Launch evac solution to more efficient, effectively share community offerings to families and students. Most of the programming is completed with another meeting this week to review progress. We'll be reviewing policies surrounding distribution of materials to align with the new system. Goal is to begin testing transition in early January. So again, we sent off an awful lot of flyers in backpacks and home to parents, and so, you know, can we reduce some of that footprint with the materials and make that an electronic solution for people who can access that? But again, we don't want to, we don't share everything that we're asked to share, because some of it would go against policy, and so, you know, we don't want to be the, you know, somebody's marketing plan, you know? We want to do things that are, that make, that are in alignment with our goal. Effective resource management. Finalize design and begin construction of a new swimming pool. I would argue that that's green at this point. I think we have had many, many meetings about that. We have an ongoing partnership that we're building with DASH. Our architects are busy building the actual blueprints that will lead to a bidding process coming up this winter. And we couldn't be, quite honestly, in a better place than where we're at with the swimming pool. Study the possible transition of a district student information system and develop appropriate next steps based on that decision. So the method by which our teachers collect data, share it with parents, Power School has some limitations, but we're looking at that. So what I have for talking points, district officials have been having numerous ongoing conversations and product demonstrations with Infinite Campus about their product capability and offering, onsite product demonstration with various internal groups, administrators, clerical staff, curriculum coordinators, teachers, et cetera, because when we make a big decision like this, it impacts a lot of folks. We want to get their input, and want to get their eyes on it. Where does it work, or, you know, is there something from your vantage point where that is an issue? Conduct conversation with the Waterloo Community Schools, similar district demographics to Dubuque about Infinite Campus, evaluating, ensuring that Infinite Campus will work with all of the other downstream systems that parents and students interact with, and the data is exchanged with. Anybody want to guess who gave me that talking point? Downstream systems, Koby? Thank you. And then formalize an official recommendation to develop a timeline to start transition process for the start of the 18, 19 school year. So again, looking at, really, there are a couple players in that game, Infinite Campus, Power School. There is a slight possibility that the state will choose a system, a statewide system, that that's a little bit up in the air, because it would be nice if all school districts could share information and talk together, especially if it's students transfer, that sort of thing, but that seems a little up in the air at this point.
So Waterloo, I take it from your comment, Waterloo has this system running?
They do. Really, the state is really about split 50/50 between Power School and Infinite Campus. Those are the two players. Everybody has something. There is, what, JMC is the third one?
JMC, correct.
The JMC's a pretty small, usually smaller school districts. I think that's what we had when I was in Wilton forever ago. So really, the players for somebody our size are Infinite Campus and Power School. So it's easy to always want the one you don't have, so we're trying to make sure we go slow and say, does it really have a value added to it? Or are we trading these headaches for those headaches? So that's the work, and that's why Koby's having so many meetings with user groups to say, you know, let's vet this all the way out, so we don't just simply say, well, the grass was greener, so we jumped over the fence, only to wish we'd stayed where we were. Create a plan for electronic storage of district records. That's yellow, steady progress. Contracting with RSM to conduct enterprise content management, so in other words, how we store our documents, and looking at our long-term vision, what does the system need? We have, as you might imagine, in an organization our size, too much paper. And the day of us getting away from all paper is probably still in the distant future, but how can we start to minimize that and create an electronic storage situation for business matters, for all the things you can walk over to our warehouse? And it's kind of like that final scene in the first Indiana Jones, where it's just boxes on top of boxes. So is there a more efficient way for us to organize our, and then also be able to pull up more data and analyze more data from that?
Do we presently store all of our electronic stuff here onsite?
Not very much.
Come up and use the microphone, please.
To answer your question, Mr. Prochuska, it depends on what information. Currently, we keep a lot of the information stored electronically in our data center. For example, we just talked about a student information system that is currently hosted with Grant Wood AEA. So our student data is hosted out of the Grant Wood AEA system. For example, our financial system is stored here, but it's backed up not only here in the district, but it's also backed up nightly to the vendor, which is Tyler Technologies as well. Transportation, and I can go on a litany of systems. It depends on what system it is, but I would say by far, the large majority of data is stored here onsite. And then what we do is, we also have a disaster recovery site, which we're also taking that data and just parking it somewhere else, so if we needed to restore that data back at some point in time, we could rehydrate a new system to bring that data back into it.
So we, and we are trying to be very careful when we share information, because as some of you may know, there have been school districts in Iowa that were targeted by...
What was the name of the group, Koby?
The Dark Overlord.
The Dark Overlord, who infiltrated their system.
No joke in matter.
No joke in matter. And then tried to blackmail them into, we're going to release all this data if you don't pay us, and I don't remember what the dollar amount was.
It was, I think it was 50 Bitcoins, and I think the Bitcoins, it's the cryptocurrency that was trading between $4,500 to $5,000. So roughly about $50,000 is what they're looking at holding demands.
So you may remember, a year or two ago, we took out some insurances in regards to making people whole, hacking insurance, basically. So that is a reality. I think for a long time, people thought, well, what would schools possibly have to target? We've got a lot. And so we're very careful with how, and when, and where data is shared, because we don't want to, you know, Johnson, that was a rough goal for them.
They canceled school for like two days or something because of threats that were done from...
Absolutely.
Getting all the parental emails where they could go directly at a parent about a specific kid.
And I think the belief is, I believe, that that was coming from overseas.
Correct.
That it wasn't even, it wasn't in the United States.
They released the original, initial source, or original source where that came from, but they believe it is from overseas. And that Dark Overlord group is a sophisticated group as well, too. They've gone after healthcare manufacturing, financial, they've went after Netflix, Disney. I mean, they're a big-time organization when they're going after certain individuals, so, or certain organizations.
You mentioned that our student data is shared through Grant Wood.
It's hosted at Grant Wood AEA.
What about our local Keystone? Are they involved in this stuff?
No, they're not. That was an opportunity Grant Wood, or, excuse me, I can't speak for all of Grant Wood's business philosophies, but I believe that they thought from their consortium, or, excuse me, from their AEA, they would like to put together, doing something for their AEA, or for their schools that they service in their AEA. And so one of the needs was, a lot of their districts had Power School, and so they decided to put together a consortium to be able to host Power School. And then they opened that business plan up, if you will, to outside school districts to be able to host off of that system as well. So Dubuque, many years ago, it used to be center point before that, opted to go with the Grant Wood AEA to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Jump into employee excellence. Provide leadership development for administrators through the Valuer Training Process. That is a multi-day process. We have completed the first three days of that, two in the summer, and then one day last Friday. Technically, it's usually a day off for administrators because it follows parent-teacher conferences, but in this room, we had a great group of folks working with the New Teacher Center about the next steps in teacher evaluation. And again, look forward to wrapping that up by December, so in time for a lot of those skills to be utilized this year yet. Provide teacher leaders with leadership development, instructional coaching and mentoring. Again, through the New Teacher Center, is providing instructional coach training for all secondary instructional coaches, all district mentors, and educational support teams. So trying to match the conversation that we're having with administrators about evaluation with what the teacher leaders are doing to help support teachers, so we're kind of all on the same page as far as what is good teaching, what is good education, what's that look like, what's it feel like, what's it sound like, so that they're being coached and mentored and trained, but also then evaluated on that same set of data. So we're very positive about that as well. And green, moving very quickly through that process. Standardized and aligned district employment practices with the new requirements that Iowa law regarding public employment. Very interesting process. Portions of the contract are no longer allowable. You may remember this from February, whatever that date was, February 17th, when we had the board meeting. So some are not illegal. You can't have it in your contract. Some are permissible, and then some, of course, will continue to be negotiated. So those pieces that are being moved into handbooks, pretty well moved along that process. We're a little bit in a unique situation, because not all contracts have expired yet. So if you had a multi-year contract prior to the terms of the law, you live with that language in that contract. Phil and Joel and some other folks from the union have been back and forth, trying to kind of iron, I don't mean back and forth in a negative way, collaboratively, trying to finalize what this handbook will look like. We have a meeting tomorrow morning at 6:30, I think, to continue that conversation. You know, those teachers don't like to miss class, so they want to meet early in the morning so they can go teach. So that's an admirable trait. So we're moving through that. We're going to use the district's web, the internal webpage, the hub, as a resource and central source of staffing access, for staff to access that information. Some has already been posted there, some is in process. Interestingly, we were asked, Phil and I, to go to Iowa Association of School Boards last Tuesday or Wednesday, to present where we were at. And in that room, everybody is all across the board. You can't imagine how this change in the law has really impacted every school district differently. So I feel very good about where we're at. And again, to the point where they asked us to kind of come and present, sort of Dubuque story. A large part of that is because we've got a good, solid collaborative relationship with our union, and we've set some pretty clear goals at the board level, that we are going to be an employer of choice. We're not going to use this as an opportunity to save dollars or something else. We're going to be fiscally responsible, but in a way that makes employees want to work in Dubuque being a school district.
So when you say differently, you mean that just other districts just dug their heels in, they're just not...
Sometimes because they don't have a choice. I mean, some financially are in a place where they don't have a lot of choice of where to go, some just based out of, I don't know, I shouldn't speak for them, but just adversarial long existing relationships where it's like, you know, so really, people are in very, very different spots. So I feel good about where we're at, and we'll keep... It is. And I think you only have to look as far as Wisconsin. There was an article, a study done last winter, that really there's have and have-nots. And districts who took the long view like we are are doing fine, they're retaining teachers, they're hiring teachers. Other districts who, again, some because they didn't have a choice financially, others because of other, you know, philosophical beliefs, are struggling, they have high turnover, people get a couple years' experience and move to a district that they feel offers them a better long-term future. So I want to be the district that offers them the better long-term future. Implement staff recognition systems to highlight exemplary work. So one of the things that we did this year, and if you were able to be at the opening session, you know, one of the neatest things that really I've experienced in my career, but we asked our graduates at graduation practice, we gave them little note cards and said, you know, if you've got a favorite teacher, fill this out, and your memory of them. And we thought, I don't know, we're going to get 20, we're going to get... We had hundreds of responses that we sorted through, we've sent sense to the teacher, but we pulled, I don't know, 10 or 12 representative ones, and there was a kindergarten teacher, elementary, middle school, high school, and we called those teachers up on stage, they thought, oh geez, they're going to make me play some game or do something goofy. And we read them. I have had more positive comments from teachers, not only the ones who had that, but from others about...
It was moving.
That it really was moving.
Yeah, it was.
So that's an example of something that we have done along that. Another thing, more recently, we did launch, and maybe you saw the email, a website for parents, or for anybody really, to log in, and what do we call them, Mike?
A-plus staff members.
A-plus staff members, and they can write, and that was opened last week, and as of today, we have over 150. And so that goes to the principal, and then to the staff member, and teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, secretaries, administrators, coaches, bus drivers are all represented in 150. So we're trying to figure out ways to not just say, hey, good job, but to be authentic in that, and really give people who experienced that good job a voice, because that's what really resonates with the folks. So we're trying to work on some other pieces, too. So we say that's green moving forward, we're trying to work on some other administrative level types of recognitions, but trying to start with that sort of homegrown students and now parents to say, you know, hey, what you're doing matters. Because we know, we like to think as teachers, that that happens, but usually you don't hear about it until, you know, somebody comes back for their 25th class reunion or something. So we're just trying to expedite that cycle.
So you've only had this a month, and you have 150?
We've had a week.
A week?
It launched on Friday.
And how many responses?
A couple days.
Couple days.
Totally.
We timed it around, we timed it around parent-teacher conferences, because we know that parents are in that mode of interacting with staff members, and so it's a good time to introduce it, because it's fresh in their minds. But we will have it posted to all of our websites throughout the year, it'll be an ongoing thing. And I suspect that probably quarterly, maybe, we're working out the timing, but probably quarterly, we'll send a reminder through our system via email to folks that they can do it. And then we'll look at other ways we can, the great thing is, we'll be able to glean a lot from that. So we will glean for sure. I mean, I just skim through a smattering of them, stories of exchanges that we will then follow up on and look for, you know, as we tell the story of the district. There are some great stories, and really heartfelt stories of parents, you know, talking about students who have struggled and the difference that a staffer made. It's really powerful, so we will look to be able to share those, and in a variety of ways, as we tell our story. But in the first four days, it's been pretty spectacular.
So are those automatically forwarded, or do you have to do that?
So they automatically go to the building administrator, and from there, then, we've asked all of our administrators to both share them with the staff member, and then look at other ways they can recognize those staff members among their peers, and do that within the authentic way of their building. So it might mean on a Friday morning, they, you know, share those amongst their entire staff. And it's a great way for us to highlight among everyone the positive things that are happening. But we leave that to the building's discretion, because they know how that will work best within their environment. But we also have them in aggregate at the district level, so we have all of them. And then, again, it automatically, as soon as someone fills it out, and they mark the building that the staff member's in, it goes right to that building principal, or department manager, if it's, you know, depending on what area they're in, but goes right to them.
And really, they're excited, knowing we would get volume with the teachers, but wanting, just interested to see, did other people get, and really across the board, you know? The bulk's still with teachers, but all of these other groups are represented in there. So again, trying to give authentic opportunities for people to say, hey, what you do matters to me or my kids.
I think the more the little stories are shared, and the different types of stories, like you said, it could be a custodian, a librarian, a para, people realize, they really are impacting my student. It's not just the English teacher or the math teacher, the principal. And that makes everyone feel good, a pat in the back.
Yeah. Well, that's why when we did the graduation piece, and we had a kindergarten teacher, it's like, this is fantastic. Somebody remembers, somebody sitting at graduation, somebody gives them 10 seconds notice, hey, fill this out. First person I think is my kindergarten teacher.
Yeah. That was so awesome.
That's pretty powerful. You know, I didn't sit around thinking, go through my yearbook and talk to my parents, and I just, boom, on the heat of the moment, who was it? It was my kindergarten teacher.
That's why. He let me bring a rug to school. I'm going to remember that person.
I haven't seen that since kindergarten teacher.
All I ever needed to learn in life was what I learned in kindergarten.
That's right.
Did you say that you're looking for things for administrative...
So, yeah, we're trying to figure out, okay, what are some other steps? You know, we really started with the students, the families, and so now, are there other things more systematically that we should have in place? I mean, we have the retirement piece, and we have the teacher recognition dinner, where we give a few awards and stuff. Are we missing something else? Is there something else that we could formalize? But really wanting to start with the emotional piece, the part that's authentic, you know, it's not system. The system's important, too, but, you know, if you ask people why they became teachers, 99% are going to tell you because of that piece right there. And so let's help them remember that and see that it's actually happening.
It's just good for overall morale.